Every Student Future Ready Strategic Plan: Increase Third Grade Reading Proficiency. The strategic plan focuses on four long-term goals. Goal number two is designed to increase third grade reading proficiency. Tonight's presentation will highlight year two of the five-year plan for goal number two, which will describe the implementation of action plans and measurements in order to monitor the district's progress on literacy improvement. This presentation is for the board's information.
Good evening, ladies. Welcome. We're anxious to hear about this, the last of our strategic goals.
It doesn't roll very well. So, yes, thank you, President Logan, Vice President Hedrick, Dr. Thompson, and other board members. Ms. Incanthron and I are pleased to be able to share with you the updates related to goal number three, increasing literacy proficiency. I sure will. I thought I was using my elementary. So, once again, we want to begin by just sharing a quick grounder for those who may be viewing our Board of Education meeting for the very first time, to just give a little bit of background. There were thousands of stakeholders that took part in providing feedback and contributed to what became, what the district and the community now knows as our commitment to educating our students and the success of our district. And this is something that you did approve in April 2018, and we call this work our Every Student Future Ready Strategic Plan. The four big goals that came from that work that you deemed most important are here on the screen, and they include to increase graduation rate, increase third-grade reading proficiency, increase certifications and college credit, and that our schools are trusted as safe places. And so, as you mentioned, tonight, we are going to take our final dive into our wildly important goal and lead indicators that speak to our work on increasing third-grade reading proficiency.
We were trying to get, there are some extra, right there. We don't have a copy of your presentation. Sorry about that. We were looking a little lost.
Okay. Well, I didn't want to turn around, but, give you a chance to get those. But we are on the last goal that we have been speaking about throughout this year. Tonight, again, we're going to be talking about those lead indicators, as well as the wildly important goal of increasing third-grade reading proficiency. In the next month, what we'll be bringing to you is the summary of year-two highlights, as well as begin to talk about the focus for volume three, which will be implemented into the 2021 academic school year. And so, as we have been illustrating for you, the alignment between our Every Student Future Ready Plan with the Kansas CAN strategic plan, I would suggest to you that the state's goal of kindergarten readiness is directly aligned with our third-grade reading proficiency goal. Perhaps this is the most important indicator of a child's success by grade three, is because this is where they are prepared to learn when they arrive to our classrooms. You've heard the data before. A child from a home of poverty has been exposed to, and this is just alarming, 30 million fewer words than their more affluent income peers. And the state's assessments are a perfect indicator of the critical nature of our third-grade reading proficiency goal. Up until third grade, students are learning to read. Third grade is the key pivotal point where students transition to reading to learn. So when our students take the state assessment for the very first time in third grade, they must comprehend what they're reading in order to experience success on those exams. We will continue to collaborate with parents and providers throughout the community to help our youngest scholars be prepared to learn when they begin kindergarten in our classrooms. In your volume-two strategic plan document, we indicated that because of the complexity of measuring literacy, we wanted time to define this goal statement and the lead measures that would lead to moving the needle for our students. And so as we move forward with our Every Student Future Ready Strategic Plan, we will have our goal set on achieving this following goal. By 2023, third-grade reading proficiency will increase from 21.93% to 44%. This goal is driven by the fact that the state of Kansas expects the reading proficiency for all students across the state to be at 75% by year 2030. So in order for Wichita students to achieve that goal, we need to be at about the halfway mark by the end of our journey of this plan in 2023, and which is why 44% is about that mark where we need to be by that time. So before I share more about our lead measures, I want to provide some additional context. First, it's important to note that the state assessments measure comprehension. Comprehension is the capstone of the measure of the BIG-five literacy. You will see shortly that we must also have focused efforts around the other four key elements in order to see growth in our assessment indicator. And so just a refresher, again, the BIG-five includes phonemic awareness, phonics, decoding, vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. Additionally, the state defines proficiency as those who score in levels three and four. So in prior years, there have been different standards of measure. At one time, it included level-two performance indicators. No longer. It's now just three and four. In our district and across the state, we have about 30% of our students who score in level-two. To put our current position into perspective, the state's third-grade literacy proficiency is at 39.5%. So I think you will soon see that we are laser-focused on what it's going to take to move the needle for Wichita students. No question, the work is going to be hard, but we know that we must succeed. So our baseline data for third-grade literacy, again, is 21.93%, which I explained earlier is the combination of students who scored in the levels three and four on the 2018 Kansas Assessment. In 2019, having scratched just the surface of our literacy reform work, we saw our proficiency mark increase 3.29 percentage points. So looking at the entirety of our third-grade literacy performance on the state assessment, I'm pleased to say, yes, we've made that growth, but we've made growth not just overall, but with specific student groups that the state does look at. We've increased the number of students in level-two and level-three by two percentage points each. So what I'm referencing is, again, there are four different levels, one, two, three, four, four being the highest, and we have moved students out of level-one to level-two, out of level-two to level-three. And we've increased the number of students in level-four, which is that highest performing group, by 1.5 percentage points. Also, it's noteworthy that WPS growth outpaced the state's growth in third-grade reading proficiency, with the state's third-grade literacy growth occurring at just beyond one percentage point. Again, we saw 3.29 percentage points here in Wichita. Additionally, we saw third-grade gains in student groups, including our Caucasian and Hispanic and economically disadvantaged students. And again, we're very pleased to see this growth, but we know we still have lots of work to do, and, but we recognize that with some of the other things that Michelle's going to talk to you about, that we are laser-focused. We have an acute awareness of where we're at, and we have plans in place for that continuous So you've heard us talk before about lag measures, the data which track the success of our wildly important goals, also referred to as WIGs. They are called lag measures because by the time you see them, the performance that drove them has already passed. Scores on the state assessment are lag measures. Lead measures, on the other hand, are both predictive, meaning they lead to accomplishments of the wildly important goals, and they are influenceable, meaning we can do something about them. So in the context of our strategic plan, the lead measures that all of us throughout the system, at all levels, all departments, have prompted us to narrow our focus to just a handful of actionable, influenceable items that will lead to the success of our goals. So, we have four significant lead measures that we're going to share with you tonight. Again, we know that the key to success is focus, and we will continue to monitor the progress and provide you updates on that, including at our April-three volume, or April volume-three presentation, when we highlight some other things.
Okay, so I'm going to talk to you about our lead measures, and the first one, it's all about the sounds, which it really is all about the sounds. If you remember, in the original goal chart that Tiffany showed, there were the BIG-five of literacy. Phonemic awareness is one of those five. We use a screener in elementary called FastBridge to determine how our students compare to other students on these standardized skill sets. The screeners, onset sounds for pre-K, and word segmenting in kindergarten tell us whether young learners are able to sound words out and break words apart. Even with students in higher-grade levels, sometimes these skills are lacking, and these screeners help us pinpoint those deficits as well. This screener allows us to identify and provide direct instruction on those foundational skills for all students. After we've identified those skill deficiencies, then our letters instructional model helps our teachers fix up those skills so that our kids can read. The goal with these pre-K and kinder screeners is to have 95% of our students considered at low risk. Next, we're going to talk about some nonsense words, which may sound a little funny that we have kids sounding out words that aren't really words, but I hope this gives a little clarity to that. In first grade, we've moved from the phonemic awareness piece into phonics and decoding. We're trying to figure out whether our kiddos can transfer sounds into what they see on paper, reading and writing. Students now have sounds that they can connect to print, which becomes phonics. We screen for mastery of the sounds, not just the words. Students need to understand the sounds made by the letters and letter combinations, and then they can read those words that are on the page. Our next lead measure, part of this, is Time to Read, and this is a screener for our second through fifth-grade students. This is additional FastBridge data. Along the continuum of reading, moving from learning to read to reading to learn becomes important, as Dr. Irving stated before. Our goal is for students to be fluent readers. This is so they spend time comprehending text instead of sounding out words. Being an accurate reader is important, is as important, it's important in order to become a fluent reader. 18% of our students in grades two through five were able to move into the target group for accuracy. So we had, we feel like we had a pretty big gain over the last year. Our goal is that 100% reading, 100% of our students reading with 95% accuracy, and I think we're moving in the right direction there, as that data shows. Our next lead measure is the mastery of ELA standards. As you guys know, SRG implementation has taken place in elementary this year to monitor students' mastery of the English Language Arts Standards. You'll be hearing a little bit about this in our upcoming presentation that follows us, but along with SRG, we are piloting the state's predictive assessment in some of our buildings. As it stands, these will be implemented in the 2020-21 school year as common assessments in order to help our teachers monitor how students are progressing towards standards Chronic absenteeism is another one of our leads. The bottom line is, for us, students have to be in class before we can teach them. Of all the data points that we've identified here this evening that are key to our progress, this may be, for us, the most disappointing set of data we will look at. As you will see in each of these clusters on your graph, the bar on the left is last year's end-of-the-year and fall semester, and the center bar is the same bar for the point this year. We have not made the progress in combating chronic absenteeism across the district. Our chronic absenteeism task force has been working throughout the year on a strategic initiative for next school year that will tackle this on three different perspectives. The first, systems updates, which will allow us to assure that our data systems are matched and consistent across our system, a focused communication strategy, and cultural-related professional development. We are individualizing the work in every school to find out the stories of our students and families and tackle this issue. I can also tell you that impacting chronic absenteeism is an essential part of our wildly important goals, not only for the elementary office, but as you heard Mr. Alvarez speak at our last board meeting, it's also a secondary issue and a priority, as well as student support services, which is led by Dr. Evans. Additionally, we're doing some root cause analysis to dive deeply into the causes of the indicators that lead to chronic absenteeism. We have to better understand the why, which is the cause of this problem for us. This needs to happen, not just from our administrative and principal and school perspective, but from the perspective of all of our stakeholders. This then will give us the data and opportunities to create some meaningful solutions, so we have some foundational change. Early reading, all of our leads that you will see here tie to kindergarten readiness goal, which was set by KSDE. Each of these lead measures tie to the work of that department. We are currently piloting two all-day pre-K programs, and we will continue that into next year. We also have letters, which is a structured literacy framework for teaching reading that is being implemented now by 100 teachers who are going through a very comprehensive training. Next year, we will have 120 spaces available, so we continue to grow our expertise in early reading. We also have Parents as Teachers. It's another program that benefits our future students. We have many, many partnerships. To name a few is Exploration Place, Rainbows, and Healthy Babies, and all of these partnerships help us prepare for our future students. Lastly, I'll talk about a couple of my favorites, since we have some social media influencers here in our presence. We have Growing Up WPS, which Dr. Irving so eloquently leads. And for those of you who were in the audience before this meeting started, reading along with our superintendent is also a big hit, I hear, getting lots of hits on social media.
What we have is an example of Growing Up WPS, which actually shows literacy skills that can be taught at home. Perhaps.
Or show your child an uppercase letter and ask them to find a lowercase version.
Can you find the lowercase r?
As you find letters, you can talk to your child about what sound each letter makes.
Good job. What sound does it make?
Or use letter sounds to play a game of I Spy.
I spy with my little eye the letter that makes the T sound.
And as kids get older, you can start looking for blends, such as the grr in grapes.
And what letters make the grr sound?
G R.
Or digraphs like sh and in words like toothbrush.
So it is all about the sounds. We get pretty excited about sounds in elementary school. Our next lead measure has to do with our tri-weekly school visits. This, again, you heard from Mr. Alvarez last week, and he shared what the secondary office was doing, so we would like to share with you our elementary school visits. During these visits, Chris, Michelle Cuda, and I focus on the building's wildly important goals, each of which align to our elementary goals, which then you could understand align to our strategic plan. Another component of these visits is the alignment of professional learning, which are focused around instruction and maintaining safe and civil schools. Instructional practices have focused around SRG, and we've revisited our delivery of professional learning content on this topic in order to allow teachers more time to work with the scales. Part of this revision has been to provide learning on standards reference planning, instruction, and then reporting that out. We have also focused on the integration of Safe and Civil Schools' stoic framework into our academic and our behavior instruction. All of these topics are then aligned to the Kansas MTSS processes and Kansas CAN. Community partnerships is our last lead measure. Read to Succeed is the focus time between students and a caring adult that is devoted to listening to a student read. That program has been invaluable for us. We currently have over 400 volunteers annually that support our students, and we have seen an impact in our data in the schools that they provide that service. Literacy Champions, an example would be Storytime Village, which we have seen the value of pairing high school students with elementary students to build reading capacity. Reading with the Shockers is what you have pictured there is a great opportunity for kids to get to know WSU freshman student athletes and be able to read and mentor with them. This year, we have the Shockers at Adams, Buckner, and Gordon Parks Academy. We are honored and proud to have over 50 community organizations engaged in our literacy support. The literacy work is clearly our priority. It is our task, but we cannot thank our community enough for the work they have done to partner with us.
So, we've spent this year, we've spent this year piloting both predictive and mini interim assessments. If you're on social media, you may have seen districts like KCK beginning to use those particular type of assessments this year. And as Michelle mentioned earlier, we have been piloting. And so what's important for us in this pilot process is that the state assessment framework is, these assessments are very similar to that, and it provides data, what we are learning, that will help us learn, perhaps, how students may perform on state assessments, which will allow us to make adjustments to instruction much earlier, as well as providing those mini interim assessments, which will allow us to have a district-wide or have district common assessments based upon standards. And so, as we conclude this academic year, we anticipate coming back to you at some time on a recommendation related to those type of assessments for perhaps adoption for the 2021 academic school year. You also may have heard that the state board has approved new dyslexia requirements. They did that at their January 2020 board meeting, and so we know that there are going to be some things that we will be expected to implement, and we will be ready for that. Those recommendations have not been completed yet by KSDE. We anticipate getting that information later this spring, but have been told that we will need to be ready to implement in the fall. And so we will be prepared and ready to do that when we receive that information.
Pause just here for a moment, just to explain to the board also that those requirements and the expectations that they're giving us will have a cost to them. And so again, here is another opportunity to say that we have another mandate that is unfunded, that we will have to implement. And then again, also, not even aware of what that will be until the last minute, and then we'll have to uproot all of our faculty and everyone else to rally around that to ensure that it happens. So I just want you to know that that is another example.
Also, in following this presentation, you will receive an update about standards reference grading and the expansion work that we will do next year, as well as those adjustments that have occurred through this year. And finally, we are creating professional learning opportunities to strengthen our second-step work. Second step is not anything that is new, but it is an opportunity for us to look at what refresher some staff may need, as well as professional learning for our new teachers. We have heard loud and clear the concerns of our teachers and staff related to behavior, and as a focus on continued implementation of second step with fidelity, we are looking at how do we strengthen that programming and behavior instruction for our students for the 2021 year. And so we've come to the end of our deep dives for each of our long-term goals behind your Every Student Future Ready Strategic Plan. The district has made tremendous growth in these two short years that we have implemented, but we have our sights set on areas that we know that we must still be laser-focused on in order to provide continuous improvement and growth, and I don't know anyone who's not committed to doing that work. So with that said, Michelle and I open it up to any questions or comments you might have.
We do have a few questions. Stan?
Two quick questions. On the question of finding out the why on chronic absenteeism, I'm assuming that, first off, good job on setting the goal. That's, I think in the past, we may have been a little concerned that maybe some of our goals were a little too easy to reach, and this one is definitely going to be a challenge, and I know that. But to my question about the why on chronic absenteeism, I'm assuming that we knew some whys in the past. Is this going to be a different dive into the whys, and we got to compare the two, or is there anything to compare?
We could find some similarities, but we could find some other things that maybe we hadn't thought of before, and I think that's why, when we do this root cause analysis, it's so important for us to look at from the perspective of our stakeholders, our students, our parents, you know, even thinking about coming at this from a socioeconomic perspective, from a family and crisis perspective. So just making sure that we're very thorough, and we're not looking at it through our lens, right?
Right.
But through the family lens, so that we truly know how to help families come to school.
So are these sit-downs with the parents to find out why their students are constantly absent or late to school? Are these surveys? Or are these surveys, or?
Part of the, the work that we're going to start with will be, we've started at the district level. We're going to do that with some of our schools, our buildings, and that could absolutely trickle down into our parent stakeholders.
And then my second question is, if the dyslexia problem went away tomorrow night, what percent would we go up? How much of percent is this the problem that's keeping us at 20? That they're keeping kids in the level one and two levels?
That's a great question. First, we don't currently assess or screen specifically for dyslexia. And so, I'm pretty confident, not knowing what the state is going to ask of us, but that some of the screeners that we currently have in place, as well as just the evidence-based curriculum that we have, because our goal has and will always continue to be to drill down to identify specific areas of deficiency, to be able to then adjust instruction and identify specific curriculum to meet individual student needs. So it's hard for me to say that because that's not something specifically.
So we don't, because we don't have an official number at this time?
Right.
Ron?
Yeah, thank you, you guys. I just wanted to find out what constitutes our chronic absenteeism?
Chronic absenteeism is if you have missed more than 10% of the school days.
10%?
Uh huh, 10%.
Over how long? Just like for nine weeks?
We actually have a sliding scale based on the week that we give to our parents, to our teachers. Every school has that information. So each week, we're able to say, if you've missed this many number of days, you would be in that chronic absenteeism box.
So what's the process? So once that happens, what's next after that?
Typically, in our buildings, even before a child gets to that, we have members of child study team, we have teachers, we have principals who are reaching out, communicating with families, trying to figure out some solutions.
Okay. I noticed also on that slide, I can't remember which one, but it's the chronic absenteeism. That's the one. Under cultural related, PD, is, is that something you're going to have the counselors come into? Because I was really impressed with the counselor that was here, and you know, we've worked with counselors, and I think they have a really good insight into a lot of our students and situations, rather than maybe a teacher might not have. But are they going to be in the loop on all that?
We want all staff to have an opportunity to participate in professional learning because, as Michelle mentioned, this is going to take all stakeholders. It's going to take anyone who works in a building who has contact with students to be able to support us, and it's going to take community and families as well. So, right now, we are in the process of identifying types of professional development and best resources to be able to provide that. And then we'll break that down by how we can differentiate that, because it may look different for different staff groups, but it's important that we're all engaged in tackling this issue.
All right. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned in your goals, the proficiency level, that by 2023, we're going to be at 44%. And you said that the state goal was 75%, but that's by when?
The state goal of 75% is 2030.
2030. Okay. So you've chucked it down, and that's how come we think we can get to 44 and by 23, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And it looks like we're moving in that direction.
That's definitely.
I, I was very pleased to see us take as big a jump as we did when you consider how young this plan is. I would fully expect that this time next year, you'll have even better numbers, so.
That's definitely what we are expecting, and that's why it's also exciting to be able to celebrate the growth of students moving from those lower areas of one and two to the three and four, as well as the data that Michelle shared, because it doesn't start just with that comprehension. Comprehension may be the measure that, that lag measure that the state, but we have to ensure that we are providing a solid foundation with those other four areas of the big five. So when it's time for the state assessment, that our students are set up for success.
Well, our students won't be able to do the comprehension if they don't have the other pieces.
Exactly. And so those numbers that she shared, everything from the fluency accuracy level, the increase of 18% and the data related to nonsense words, all of that is showing that just during these two years, the progress that our students and our staff are making, our staff making with our students that are going to have direct implications of the growth of that lag measure.
And just one more question, and it's related to the dyslexia piece, because I know we've had some people on that committee at the state level bringing information back, as well as sharing information with them.
Yes. I'm trying to see if he's back there today.
Oh, yeah, hi.
Yeah, Mr. Heath. And so we're very fortunate to have him actually as a member of that task force.
Right. And our letters piece that we now currently have 100 people trained, will be training another 120, correct?
Correct.
That, that is a very structured program. Will that, do you think that that will tie into the whole dyslexia piece? So that we're not just throwing the baby out and starting all over again?
I do. I, I believe that that, because of the research behind letters, that it will be something that we'll be able to use as part of our plan to, that will be a part of the requirements from the state. We officially will find out that in April, but it is something that we have shared with the state that we have in place, and they have given us some positive indication that that will be something that we will be able to continue to expand to support.
I certainly hope so, because I think that's working for us.
Yes.
I would hope that we could continue it. Okay. Ben?
So, say for example, there's a Wichetan that has insomnia and is watching this telecast at 3:00 in the morning, and they're seeing this presentation, and they go, I want to help this effort. What are some ways that an adult without any kids in the district could help our work in third grade reading proficiency?
Well, we are always looking for ways to use volunteers and community partners, and I would tell them to begin by contacting our strategic and communications office. Ms. Suzie Phin was here, but she is wonderful in being able to help folks within our community that have a passion to be a part of this work, and helping them find ways that they can connect with us in the district to be partners in this work.
Awesome.
One other thing that, you, you might put the slide back up on the community partnerships, because I know I am a tutor in Read to Succeed. I, I work every week with a second grader out at Minnehaha. And that's a way that if, if one of our community members wants to be involved, it's run through the United Way. And it just is like 30 minutes once a week, but it makes a difference. Okay. Ernestine?
Well, I was just going to say that exact thing. It's that if they dial 211, it gets, takes them to United Way, and they can say, I'd like to read, I'd like to help with the third grader. I will be providing a ride to one of those readers, one of those listeners tomorrow. She makes sure that I understand she's not reading to the third grader. The third grader is reading to her. And that, that is just, that whole idea about, they very often can even decipher the words, but to, to be able to get the understanding, that really helps to be able to read one-on-one. And I think that there's a number of people out there that I really think would love to be able to help us if they knew that, and I just hope they will. Either, as you say, call the strategic communications office, or just dial 211, and it, the United Way will, and tell them, I want to, I want to help kids learn to read.
Hopefully, we have some of these insomnia listeners.
I know we do, because I meet them up in the grocery store. They're like, I know you from somewhere.
Well, we greatly appreciate this presentation. It's been a joy to see our whole strategic plan and each goal and where we're moving with it. So thank you very much. I know it's been a lot of hard work.
Ma'am, what's next for the strategic plan is, as we promised, in April, we will come back with kind of a culminating and kind of talking a little bit about what's next.
Great. Thank you.